Tonight's event is sponsored by the League of Women Voters as well as Upland Chamber of Commerce. We expect a great candidates forum tonight and we appreciate that all of you are here. The first thing I'd like you to do to start this event, first of all, my name is Cindy Rule. I'm in charge of voter services for the League of Women Voters and I'll be helping out with the format tonight. The first thing we need to do at any political event or any event that the League sponsors is we need to salute our flag. Would you all please stand and address the flag? Ready? Begin.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can all take a seat now. And I am sorry, but it's great to have an overflow crowd. It's great to see all of you here tonight. If you have not silenced your cell phones, if you please would do so now, we want to try to keep the aisles clear. You don't have to go back up as long as we can keep the aisles clear and the back clear. We're in great shape. And the restrooms, the men's is on the right, oh, excuse me, the men's is on the left, the women's is on the right. But I forgot, this is a nonpartisan event. There's no left or right. The restrooms are in the back if you need them. Okay, when you arrived tonight, you were each given a card or the ones that you wanted a card. This is your opportunity to ask these candidates questions. Please make sure that you ask the question to the entire panel. We will not accept questions to individual candidates tonight. We had online questions that were submitted. We also had event questions for the chamber that written questions were submitted. We've taken all those questions and transferred them over to a three by five card and they're over there at our sorters desk. Let me tell you what our sorters do. First of all, I'm going to be one of them. But joining us tonight is the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, Suzanne Graves. Also sorting tonight will be the League of Women Voters President, Ruth Curry. And helping out is Lisa from the chamber and me Cindy, I'll be over there in a few minutes. And what we do over at the question sorters desk basically is we put the questions into categories, we eliminate duplicates so that when we do ask the questions, we can get as many questions out there as many topics as in the timeframe that we have. So we're going to do our best job to cover as much as we can. And let me tell you how the candidates are going to be answering these questions. The candidates, first of all, they are lined up left to right in the order that their names will appear on your ballots. Your ballot should arrive this week. So the first question, when we get to the question and answer section, we'll go to Bill Schusler and end up with Gino Felipe. The second question, we're going to start with Debbie Stone and go all the way around and end up with Bill Schusler. That's how it's going to work. Tonight's forum is going to begin with an opening statement from each one of the candidates. It's going to be three minutes in length. After we're done with the opening statements, the candidates are then going to be opening, we're going to start the question and answer period. And then at the end of the question and answer period, they're going to get one more minute to tell you why you should be voting for them. Candidates, are you okay with that?
Yes.
All right, we've got timers up here keeping an eye on the time. Candidates, you've got the timer here, you've got timers with cards there, so just keep an eye on those timers. And ladies and gentlemen, are we ready to get started tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Let me introduce to you your, our moderator, Mr. Dave Powers from the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Thank you very much Cindy. Welcome ladies and gentlemen, candidates. I'm looking forward to the questions tonight. First of all, I have a quick announcement. Mr. McHam had a previous appointment and will not be present for the questioning. I'd like to introduce the candidates that are before you this evening. Bill Schusler. Deborah Stone. Susan Burke. Rod McAliff. Stephen Dunn. Carol Timm. Gino Felipe. Okay, question number one.
Nope, open statement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've got a lot of talkers.
Yeah, that's right. Bill, please give us your three-minute opening statement.
Good evening. I'm Bill Schusler. I've lived in Upland for 30 years, same house, and I retired from law enforcement after 31 years with Los Angeles County. Retired as a supervisor. And people ask, why am I running for council? And it didn't take a lot of thought process because if you take a look around in your city and a lot of us who have lived here a long time, you go down the streets and you say, this isn't what Upland used to be years ago. And the next question I had to myself is where's Upland going to be in five years? Where's Upland going to be in 10 years? And I'm not a real fan of how the direction is going. I'm concerned about the fact that yes, we have a balanced budget, but at the same time, our balanced budget is based on the spending versus the expenditure, I'm sorry, revenue versus expenditures, which is essentially keeping the thing status quo. I'm a little disconcerted about the looking forward of the valuable land we have left, whether it's commercial, retail, residential. That is all we have. We are not fortunate like Rancho, we're not fortunate like Ontario Rialto. We get what we have and we have to be very vigilant in how we're going to plan this out because the bottom line is we need revenue in this city and right now, we don't have it. According to our last budget, we have exceeded our sales tax revenue by about $900,000 from the year prior and our property values of about $400,000. With our city, our general revenue is approximately, I'm guessing somewhere around 60-some percent of property tax and sales tax revenue. For some of you that remember, when the state goes belly up or they have their own fiscal problems, they shift away our property taxes and other taxes away from us, from the county, the county takes it from us. It's a trickle-down effect. We're not in that position to take a 10% takeaway from that. We are that fragile. So I'm for empowering our city to move forward with what we have, what we need to go forward with that. And we cannot sit here and say, well, it's the way we've always done it. We can't do that anymore. It's over. Pensions. Calpers is a cash cow on all of our cities, not just Upland, it's everywhere, it's prevalent. And I am advocating that the cities need to come together as a coalition to try to rein this under control because they will continue to come back on us and we have nothing to say about it other than to pay it. And something has to give. And we still are bound by law to pay it, but something on the backside is going to give and unfortunately, it's going to be on the backs of our citizens. So that is the reason why I'm here to run. Thank you.
Thank you. As a professional woman, I bring the passion for the city of Upland and the families that reside in it. I am used to balancing the demands, doing a diligent job of being your voice of our city council, raising a family, working full-time and doing all the things that a family needs to do to thrive. While the economy has begun to recover, we still face problems in the economy. This only impacts us, this only impacts us personally, it impacts our city's financial situation as well. During my past three years on council, we began to live within our means and recovered some of the financial reserves we need to have as a city. We by no means have all the problems solved, but we have begun to move things in the right direction. We have faced several issues that are difficult to solve. Among them, a broken state pension system that we have no control over and poor financial decisions made by previous leaders. We cannot undo the past. We can only move forward. Complaining that the pension system is a mess, is messed up, won't change the binding contracts that were made with former and current employees. It only serves as a distraction. In order to move Upland forward, we need to change what we can to improve the long-term financial stability of our city. We cannot rely on a sale of a couple of properties to shore up our financial reserves. I will never support building capital projects that do not have the required ongoing financial support needed to operate and maintain them. The animal shelter is just one high-profile example of this being done in the past. It has taken nearly two and a half years to outsource our library. Now that it is outsourced, this vital community resource is open seven days a week to serve our students and community members. I supported the idea when it was first suggested, but it took far too long for it to move forward. The hype about selling our water is just that hype. The council has taken no action and has no plan, and no plans have been presented to this council on that idea. If a plan ever comes forward to sell our water, I will not be in favor of it. I know that I can continue to make a positive difference in the way things are being done in the city. We still have a lot of work to do to restore our pride in Upland, but things are moving forward. I believe the council should accurately represent all of its citizens of Upland. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Burke.
Good evening. My name is Susan Burke. I've been a resident of Upland and for 31 years, my husband and I have been married for 31 years, moving here shortly after we were married. I have gone, raised in Southern California, went to Cal Poly Pomona. I have a bachelor of science degree in mathematics and an MBA. We have two daughters that attended the wonderful schools here in Upland and they have both graduated from college. So we're quite proud of that.
Can you hear me? Howard.
Okay, can you hear me now? I decided to run for Upland City Council when the task force moved forward the water privatization initiative. I looked into this initiative, studied it and had some series of meetings in my community to ensure that I understood what this initiative was about. And my conclusion was, it's not good for the residents and it would be a long-term detrimental effect on the community and I'm not in favor of it. And so everyone understands, I know it's not selling our water and sewer assets, but it's privatizing the management of the water and sewer assets. And this would be a de facto tax on the residents of Upland and the businesses because if this initiative goes forward, our rates would increase. And you have to understand that the council...
Double. You said double.
The council we elect this November will decide this critical issue. I also believe the city council's job is to act as a board of directors to the city, providing guidance to the city manager and always keeping the residents as the number one priority. And I haven't seen this in the last several years. And I think this is the most compelling reason for change this November. I am also not in favor of increased taxes or creating new taxes. I think that we need to get our spending under control and look for cost-saving opportunities within each department. Each department manager has their budget and they need to make sure that they come in at that budget or under that budget. If they feel that there's a risk to that budget, they need to look for cost-saving opportunities. I have a over 30 years of experience in the commercial and defense sector, having led and managed technology programs. I am responsible for contract negotiations, delivering to my contract and cost and schedule. And my stakeholders are varied on my, in my corporate job, but my stakeholders here, if you elect me to the city of Upland, the council of Upland, will be the citizens of, the residents of Upland. And I will ensure that I will always work for you and keep your best interest at the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you. Rod McAliff.
Good evening. My name is Rod McAliff and I consider it a privilege to be up here tonight. I'm married, have a daughter who attends Upland High School and have lived in Upland for about 10 years. Over the past 25 years, I've had the privilege of serving in the Marine Corps, serving at the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department and serving as a corporate loss prevention manager for a large organization. One position I held at the Sheriff's Department was scheduling for over 100 personnel with an operating budget of $7 million a year. As a corporate loss prevention manager, I would investigate shortage, eradicate it and implement the proper controls to ensure reduction, there's a reduction in future losses. I received both my bachelor's and master's degrees in business management from Azusa Pacific University. These experiences have prepared me to effectively serve the citizens of Upland as a council person. I'm running for city council because the citizens of Upland demand and deserve a person of integrity that will serve them without compromise, even to the special interest. Now let's talk about the elephant in the room. According to the budget task force report, the city and its finances are in the worst death spiral they have ever been in and immediate action plan is required to avoid further bankruptcy. While the death spiral almost flattened our city's finances rather than take any accountability for their role, Mr. Felipe and Mr. Dunn continue to waste time deflecting all blame to other council members by accusing them of being uncooperative. However, if you go to the voting records and poll them, you will find that nine times out of 10, the majority vote sided with Mr. Felipe, Councilwoman Stone, along with Mr. Dunn and his agenda when he was city manager. Each of them has had almost four years to turn the city around, however, it has got significantly worse. Four years ago, Mr. Felipe ran as a reform candidate and with the utmost respect, the only thing that I found that he reformed was a 12-year, $60 million contract with Burt Tech without even sending it out for a bid. Now he's running with the slogan, let's get Upland back on track. Mr. Felipe's lack of experience to move the city forward in the past four years, coupled with Mr. Dunn's non-flexible management style, both played a significant role in the city ending up in the worst death spiral in the city's history. If elected, I will be fiscally responsible with your money, just like I am with my own. I will not raise taxes strictly because of city's financial mismanagement. I will always operate within the means of the city budget. I will ensure better cost controls. I will not privatize our water. I will not outsource our police department. I will always listen to your concerns, be transparent, accessible and accountable to you. I will always represent the taxpayers' interest, not the many self-interests that make their way through city hall. I will be the voice of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Dunn.
Good evening, everybody. Are we having fun yet? I'm Stephen Dunn. I'm running for city council. Was here, a city manager, was with the city, serving you, the citizens, for over 13 years. I have 30 years of experience working in local government and I know it from a staff perspective. I have the most experience of all the candidates up here and even the one who didn't show up, of dealing with the issues specific to the city of Upland. Twenty, of the 22 recommendations that the task force made to the city council were in fact made by me up to two years prior to the task force ever being convened. I know what to look for from a policy perspective. I also know what to look for as far as a practicality perspective, meaning I know what to look for from the staff perspective, okay? It's great to set policy, but can you really implement it? That's the, that's the true challenge. Everybody up here, with the exception of Debbie and Gino, will need a learning curve to understand what's going on. That's going to be months before they're going to figure out what really is going on behind those curtains. I don't need that learning curve. I know what's going on behind those curtains.
What's going on?
Mr. Cowherd, you and I have had many conversations and I'd be more than happy. So anyway, off that said, my history shows that A, I'm here to serve you, B, I'm not afraid to make a decision, and C, I am not willing, I'm not afraid to make recommendations. I'm willing to work with anybody to get us on the right track. I feel that I'd be an excellent addition to the Upland City Council. You're going to find here, you're going to find misstatements, people who aren't willing to do the research that is absolutely necessary for this, okay? Research about...
You've got double the one sewer bill!
So, can we ask Mr. Cowherd to be left? Yes, okay. Anyway...
Stephen, go ahead and finish, please.
Okay. Anyway, related to that, basically I'm just challenging you to take the time and effort to find the facts. Don't just listen to one of us and think that that's the God's honest truth. Don't listen to one or two people in the audience and think that's the God's honest truth. Ask some questions, make an informed decision. Thank you.
Carol, if you could just hold off just one minute, please. Ladies and gentlemen, I love activism. I love community politics, local politics, but I don't have the courage to run for office and neither did any of you out here. They deserve our respect for being up there and willingness to take our questions. So I ask, do you want to continue tonight and listen to what the candidates say or do you want to listen to continued outbursts from the audience? Audience, can I get your support? Can we continue tonight because I believe we all came here to learn something about our candidates? Ladies and gentlemen?
Thank you Cindy.
That's okay.
Thank you Stephen. Carol Timm?
Hi, my name is Carol Timm and I've been a volunteer in accomplishing many goals, making our community better for 31 years, the time that I've lived here. I've been married for 38 of those years and I have one daughter who was raised here in Upland Schools. And I am the only candidate who's been walking for the last six months, going door-to-door, talking to you about your concerns and what you really care about. I believe we are at a very important time in the history of Upland. You know, our city has been on the brink of financial insolvency for the last four years and we really need leadership that's not afraid to take charge and do what is right for the taxpayers and businesses. Think about the last four years. We have been told, you're going bankrupt, you're going bankrupt, but nothing was done by the current council. And then last November, oh, let's send it to a committee to see what they think. And I think we need to look at that. We need proactive people. And I have been a planning commissioner and yes, that does give me experience that I've been up here for 16 years as a planning commissioner and also as an airport land use member, as a historic commissioner, and also a 30-year local teacher, which now I'm retired, and a longtime president of Upland Heritage. I have dedicated my life to making this community a better place to live. As president and CEO of Upland Heritage for 25 years, I helped improve the neighborhoods by increasing, decreasing crime by fighting to rezone areas. We went for a year going door-to-door and said, this area is so full of crime, we need to rezone it single-family because they were tearing down a lot of homes and building other structures where the gang members were living. And so we got that changed. And then after the zoning was changed, I promoted and created nine historic districts here in our city and put Euclid Avenue on the national register, even when the city staff said, no, we don't have time to do it. I went down to another city and got them to help me. So I'm a proactive individual and I know what I'm doing. Through Upland Heritage, I also put back money into our neighborhoods of over a quarter of a million dollars were put back into the neighborhood. As a planning commissioner, I fought to improve city standards. As the chair of the planning commission, I attracted great development like colonies businesses. I contributed to the city's general and specific plans. I know about that, where some people who've not been, who's on the planning commission, they know about it, but other people don't. 16 years on the planning commission has given me a great business experience of working with multimillion-dollar government contracts and I have a working knowledge of this city and its components. My main goal is to protect the city by promoting fiscal responsibility, staying within our budgetary means and promoting economic growth. Upland residents need a city council that can be positive and proactive, not reactive and afraid to act. It is my pledge to you, the Upland residents, to meet your needs, to listen to your concerns and I am committed to be strong, decisive leader. Our city needs to get back on track. It's time for Tim. Thank you.
Thank you. Gino Felipe.
Thank you. Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the Upland Chamber of Commerce for their efforts in organizing this special event, this great venue. And for those of you that are home watching, thank you for your interest. This is an excellent opportunity, as you've already seen, for us to share our vision, correct the record, get the record straight, as Stephen Dunn alluded to, and simply try to air out the issues that are affecting Upland. I wanted to thank the residents and businesses of Upland for the last four years, well, three and a half years for having faith in me. I'm very pleased to be here, running for reelection to promote financial stability, economic development, Upland's quality of life through a balanced budget, which we've obtained thanks to Stephen Dunn and the council, and to both attract and retain businesses and responsible management of our public services and public safety. And when I allude to public safety, I'm not just talking about police and fire and paramedic, I'm talking about public works. We all know the conditions of our streets and sidewalks and trees and such, so I include public works in public safety. I'm speaking about also preservation of our assets. I'm not advocating selling any assets, as Debbie alluded, or excuse me, as Susan accused the council of doing. That's not in the playbook here. Stephen Dunn, our former city manager, drafted and presented an extensive financial plan, reviewed and endorsed by a member of 10 business leaders and community members. An example of how that works is we renegotiated contracts, we've sought public and public partnerships. Debbie mentioned the library. If you combine the library, the fire administration agreement with Montclair and the renegotiated contract with the air ambulance service, we've already saved approximately $700,000. If you look to some of the efforts that the mayor and Stephen Dunn made when they appealed to the employees, that was another $2 million. What are the major issues facing Upland? We all know. It's finance and rebuilding our reserves, salaries and pension obligations, maintaining public safety to meet the needs of our residents, our schools and our businesses, economic development in downtown, which Carol knows downtown has suffered for more than 16 years, and homeless. So I'm here to answer questions and do the best job I can. I want what's best for Upland, like all of you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, candidates. We're going to start with our first question and it will be addressed to Bill Schusler. Each a question, you have one minute to answer and then we'll move right across the forum. First question, Mr. Schusler. If you are elected to the Upland City Council, what one thing do you want to see accomplished during your council term?
I want to be able to wake up every morning and know that I have done what I can do in my power, what I can do to reach out to my peers, the other four on the council and work together, and that's the key, is work together. But it is imperative that our budget is in the black. It cannot be doing this. I believe our city manager even said, when he was working there, he said, we need over $3 million over the next five years per year to maintain the status of our services as we sit right now. So that's what I want to do. We have to do it. We have to come together. We need to be transparent and I think with accountability, you have transparency and I am a firm believer that town hall formats encourage the public to give us ideas as well because we're not perfect.
Thank you. Deborah Stone, do you need me to readdress the question?
Please.
If you were elected to the city, to the Upland City Council, what one thing do you want to see accomplished during your council term?
Well, there's more than one thing. I would like to see us as a council come together and continue to move the task force items forward. Back two and a half, almost three years ago, when I became on council, Stephen Dunn had told us what needed to be done and how we needed to do it. Then they decided they needed to have a task force to tell us what we needed to do and how we needed to do it. I was against that. We were put on this council to make decisions on your behalf and that wasn't done. So with that said, I would like to see the, I believe it's 22 items come forward and actually get some work done on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Burke, would you like me to readdress the question?
Sure, thank you.
If you are elected to the Upland City Council, what one thing do you want to see accomplished during your council term?
I would want to see this water privatization issue, which I know is not selling our water and sewer assets, it's outsourcing the water management. I would want that to go before the voters anytime anybody in the future decides that that needs to be an option we need to consider because you can't count on a current city council or future ones making sure that our best interests are adhered to. So this is one thing I would want to accomplish during the four years. Thank you.
Mr. McAliff, would you like me to redress the question?
I'm okay, thank you.
All right.
What I would like to see, there's several things I would like to see, but first of all, I'd like to see action because I'm tired of treadmill politics where we hear all these good ideas, but six months later, nothing's done. Secondly, nothing will get done until special interest is eliminated for here. Administration can talk about the past administration and say they broke the law, they broke the law, and they did, but when you walk that fine line and take care of all the special interests that still come in here, it hurts, it hurts all you residents. And lastly, most importantly, I want to see 100% of you represented, not just the 20% of people that make a lot of people in here happy.
Stephen Dunn, would you like me to readdress the question?
No, I'm good, thank you. Okay, so if elected, what I would like to see is that all services that are provided that you want and you have become accustomed to are delivered in a most effective and efficient way within the means that we have. And that's the number one thing I want when you put me on council.
Carol Timm?
Yes, I would like to see, get things accomplished, such as, I would like to see the budget to be worked out and to... the budget to be worked out, and to undo that, this is what we need to do. We need to think about getting an economic development director, and this person would go through and increase revenue, improve our finances. They would go and say, okay, look at all these empty spaces we have here in Upland. Let's fill those with businesses that we need. And that would be really important, to be business friendly. We are not considered business friendly. We need to put policies in place to streamline the process. When someone comes to the city, we get it taken care of. Let's also increase jobs for all sectors of people, minority enterprise jobs, and for women's enterprise and small business enterprise. And there's all kinds of other jobs that I have ideas for that we need to work on in order to increase our revenue, to make it so that we are fiscally solvent. Thank you.
Gino Felipe, would you like me to readdress the question?
No, sir. I've worked very hard in the last few years to maintain focus on what's essential for a local community. And for a local government, it's protecting the residents, safe neighborhoods, clean water, and I will continue that within the budget and in realigning some of the agreements as we've done already. I'd also focus on making sure that our next city manager, our new city manager, Rod Butler, is successful, and I don't see a problem with working with him. So again, I would keep focus on the vital essential services that a city like Upland relies on: public safety, public works.
We're going to start our second question with Deborah Stone. Deborah, what is your number one proposed solution to balance the budget and finances?
That's not quite as easy as it sounds, but we have a lot of opportunities within the city in order. Our employees have given back their portion of the pension. Our employees have been cut to where we're running on pretty much a shoestring, but yet they still provide the services to you in the city. So I guess what I would say is that we would need to balance everything out so that we're doing it fair, equally, and getting the job done correctly. Thank you.
Susan Burke.
I would implore every department manager to look for budget-saving opportunities. This is what we do in the private sector. When we have issues across the company, we ask each program to look at where they can save money. I think if we ask our employees, we have a lot of good employees at the city, they will come up with ideas. We also have to be creative in generating revenue. We have assets that I think are underutilized, and we have to look maybe to other organizations outside of the city of Upland on how to better utilize those assets. Thank you.
Thank you. Rod McAuliffe.
I would begin with fiscal responsibility, and that sounds like a general blanket I'm throwing out there, but it's not. When it's not your personal money, it's easy just to waste. But I would, number one, start operating like the frugal person I am in my own life, which has made me be comfortable financially, and I would do the same with the taxpayers' money, be responsible. And I would look at things like pay. There's people here at City Hall that are making way too much, and then there's line employees that aren't making enough. So I would try to balance that out to make it fair. And then I would implement cost controls, to have checks in balance and audits to ensure that money is being spent in the most effective and the best way that it will be effective to the taxpayers and to the city to get the most out of it.
Stephen Dunn.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. What is your number one proposed solution to balance the city budget and finances?
Okay, well, first of all, if you do the research, you'll find the city's budget's been balanced every year for the last few years. And that's not the issue. The issue is, how do we make gains? How do we improve the streets? How do we take care of things that we're no longer taking care of? And so how you do that is, it's a twofold process. One is, you look at operations and you say, is that the most effective and efficient way we could do something? And if it is, great, but I'll guarantee you, there's a lot of lack of productivity in the different areas. The other side is, is you must look at the revenue side as well. The question is, what's your priority? What do you want? And then how do we deliver it? You're not going to get it all from just cutting the budget.
Carol, Tim.
Could you repeat the question?
Sure can. What is your number one proposed solution to balance the city budget and finances?
There is no one solution, I agree with that, but there are many things we can do to make our city better. First of all, we looked at balancing. There is, as Stephen said, you either, you have a, you can cut, and you can add jobs, do things like that. I think the number one thing is, we need an economic development director. We need to make fiscally responsible decisions. I believe the pension costs, you need to look at that for police and fire. It's 2%, it's now 3% of 55, making that 2%. The development, we need to get more staff. We need to balance it, because the administrators are being paid unusually high amounts, whereas the worker bees are paid very little, and we have little left. We need to look at the administrative costs. We need more jobs in our city. We need more businesses in our city. We need blue and white collar jobs. And so, thank you very much.
Gino Felipe.
Thank you. The budget's been balanced, as Stephen alluded to. It will continue to be balanced. We've made cuts, approximately 25% across the board in the employee ranks. We've saved money by consolidating services. We've saved money by joining with other agencies, for example, Montclair, and the joint plan with Montclair, which is a pilot program, sharing responsibility on fire administration. With a city manager, with a new city manager here that's embracing the plan by Stephen Dunn, and with the diligence of the people like myself and Debbie, I know how she operates, we can continue to make gains and work away from the concerns that everyone has about revenues and budget.
Okay, let me clarify what a balanced budget is. It means that we do not spend more than we take in. That said, that is balanced. It does not take into effect the many millions of dollars we have borrowed from enterprise funds. Those have not been paid back. Okay, so that, beyond that. Number one thing, and this is the only thing that you can do to get this going, you have to gain the trust of all of you out there. That's what it comes down to. Everybody is sick of it. They are sick of the scandals that have gone on. We are part of that search warrant club of other cities, and when anything comes before you to ask for your assistance, to maybe get a tax increase, any of those things, what do they say? Obviously, it's a no, because where's the money going to go? There is no trust. That's why I propose town halls. You have to have dialogue with the citizens. I'm a citizen, and if you don't do that and gain the trust, you will get nowhere. That's how you don't balance your budgets.
Thank you. Our third question will be directed to Susan Burke. Please describe the proposal before the council regarding the water, and what are your feelings on this proposal?
Well, this is probably no secret. You can see this on my signs, you can see it everywhere. I am opposed to the water privatization, which is outsourcing the management of our water and sewer assets. It's been proposed from the task force committee that we would get a cash infusion into the general fund, and a one-time cash infusion somewhere between $5 and $30 million, and then a steady stream of money coming into the city as well, somewhere between 1.5 and maybe $2 million. I'm opposed to this, because the only way a company can make up that type of investment is to raise our rates. And I believe this is an end run about, around the regulatory requirements that we are covered by today on rate increases, so I am opposed to it.
Rod McAuliffe.
It's McAuliffe.
McAuliffe.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I figured after four times, I might as well say something. My issues on the water are this, and like Mr. Dunn says, research it, research it, research everything we're saying, research everything I'm saying. And the fact of the matter is, when the city has control of the water, it has to go before the voters to raise the price of the water. When it gets privatized, whether it's managed, outsourced, whatever they want to label it to deceive you, the fact of the matter is, don't listen to me. Research it. There'll be no restrictions on how they can raise it, and that's how this report by Mr. Dunn's people shows that the city will save or make between $5 and $30 million, because you're going to pay for it.
All right, thank you. Yeah, this is probably one of the issues that's been most blown out of proportion. Basically, we said, hey, let's take a look at how we run things. The prior question, how do we have a balanced budget? How do we, you know, make things, our finances better? So why don't we look at every aspect? Can they, anybody up here say that our water system's being run the most efficient as possible? No, they can't. What you got to do is you got to study it. Now, our, one candidate is pointing to a neighboring city and saying, that's what we want. That's exactly what we told the city council, but there's many ways of dealing with this issue. If I could save money and use that money for other things, why wouldn't I?
Can we ask him to leave?
Yes, hi. Yes, I do not believe we should sell the management of, outsource the management to announce that entity for these reasons. I've really investigated it, and I've gone back and forth, because I realize when you privatize it, then you, obviously, you're not having to pay pensions, and that's a plus, but there's also considerable risk. I've done all sorts of research, and the risks are to the public, to you, to our water resource systems, and to the environment. There are environmental issues that require strong government oversight, and many times with privatizing, you don't have that government oversight, oversight. And it marginalizes the community and their decision-making. It also, you don't take into account the impacts on downstream communities and the environment, and it also doesn't ensure water quality. That's going to be really important in the future. Think how important our water is. For 30 years, we bought up these water shares in Upland. The city was visionary to do this, and we have an underground aquifer. If someone took over, they may be less educated, experienced, and knowledgeable. So why take away control?
Thank you. Gino Felipe.
Thank you. As the former city manager stated, the misleading information on the water issue is just that. However, I am in favor of discussing with neighboring agencies the fact that Upland has an excess of water, liquid water, and other agencies need water and have the financial means by which to purchase it. Those are my comments.
Mr. Schusler.
I, along with Mayor Musser, attended the, one of the presentations by the companies that privatize water and they do the infrastructure. I will tell you that they are more than qualified to handle it. That's not the issue. The issue is, we have to look at the infrastructure repairs, and that's based on how much money we get. It's like a line of credit. You're going to get the money, but you've still got to pay back principal and interest, and if you can't meet that, guess what? It gets passed down. That's the bottom line. But I will say, and I'll agree with Mr. Dunn, they are justified companies, they are there, but it's not a good fit for us, only because we have to get our spending under control. You get $100 million, you get $30 million, you get $5 million, you give your kid 50 cents, if he doesn't know how to spend it properly, it gets blown really fast, and that's our problem. And so that's why I'm not opposed to it. Other than that, other cities that have it, if it works for them, that's fine, but they may also have cost controls.
Deborah Stone.
Thank you. First of all, let me just say that the water issue completely, completely got blown out of proportion. We were asked to research, go out and investigate, see what this company could do for our infrastructure. Our infrastructure here in Upland is in sad shape, and all I can say is, we better hope that we don't have a UCLA situation here in Upland. That's what outsourcing, looking at what the water, what this could do for our water system. It's completely blown out of proportion, and it's not what it is. So please do your research. Thank you.
All right, question number four. Mr. McAuliffe, we're going to start with you. Thank you. This question was from the chamber event, homeless. What is your plan to assist the growing homeless population?
That's probably one of the most complex issues in the city, because there's legal ramifications, there's certain citizens, you know, either way, somebody's going to get offended no matter what happens. But the main way to do it is, due to even the city's finances and so forth, is to reach out to the nonprofits, the churches, and so forth, and establish programs to help people get back on their feet. If they're having issues with drug and alcohol, put them through drug and alcohol counseling, which will cost the city nothing. If it's a mental issue, get them some help. If, there's many different things we could do. There's many different people in the city that could assist in that, and it's not an easy solution, but unless something's done, it's going to get worse. And I don't know about anybody here, but the times I've been to Memorial Park the last four years, it seems like each time I'm driving through there to go to San Antonio Hospital, the situation's, you know, more out of control. So something needs to be done.
Stephen Dunn.
Thank you. As of right now, there is not one cent in the budget to deal with the homeless issue directly. Yes, the city funds probably through the community development block grants and money to help agencies that will help the homeless. It's all about setting priorities. I said it earlier, I'm going to say it again. It's a matter of priorities of what do you want to deliver to this city, and then it's allocating the amounts for that. Once you allocate the amounts, you have to figure again the most effective and efficient use of those funds for the problem. How do you do that? The city itself is not equipped to do it. You work with other groups, you work with other agencies to get the most bang for the buck, and that's how this city is going to deal with the homeless.
Carol, Tim.
Yes, I am the only one running who is involved with the homeless stakeholders committee, and we need to work with, it's called Ladders to Homes, and there are currently six churches right here in Upland that are working with this, where they get the homeless off the street and they actually get them homes to live in. And we need to encourage more, more of our churches and institutions to do this. Also, as a planning commissioner, we zoned in the new general plan a place for the homeless, but there's nothing to be, we don't, and we're not able to build anything there, so what use is it? I think the city council should instigate, this is something, a local hire program, and this would sign people up for training for free. This could work for homelesses working in other cities, and they learn a skill, and they're eligible to participate in capital gains projects. We need to expand our homeless programs and provide more homes through supporting the churches. I would support a shelter shuttle, and this is used in other cities, where a shuttle is called, of course, nonprofits run this, and they go to the homeless person and they actually say, okay, are you a veteran? Are you a single mom? And they deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Gino Felipe.
The faith-based organizations and volunteers are helping the homeless in our community, and I think that's their role. The city plays a minor role, as Stephen Dunn alluded to. We just don't have the budget, nor do I think it's a priority for the city, and I know that will offend some people. We have six police officers on duty at any given time to cover 15 square miles. If you ask Chief Mendenhall about the park, he says, we really don't like going over there. We've tried to take a softer approach with them for two reasons: to be civil to the people that are there and avoid lawsuits. However, when there's people in the park that are harassing the women and children we're there, it is a concern. I feel the resources are best spent by helping those people that are just on the edge of homelessness. Debbie, the mayor, and I work closely with the First Methodist Church here in town, and they have a program called Stone Soup Ministries every Saturday, and they offer a great deal. So it's one of many in town.
Thank you. Bill Schusler.
I am all about exactly faith and non-faith-based organizations, because we have ordinances in the park that we can't go down and feed them or things like that. I really, at this point, I don't think that that's a priority to enforce those kind of things. However, when people say that it's the reality of it and everything else, I think we all have to agree it's quality of life for the 99.9% that aren't homeless, and they have to be free to go to the parks and do what they have to do. There's a point when we do have to go in and we have to enforce the laws. We have to enforce those things, and up to that point, we have to empower these organizations and support that. Not monetarily, but we have to, we have to support that. Additionally, Samaritano County just received a half a million dollars from HUD and the Department of Veterans Affairs this week. 65 homeless veterans are going to be placed in homes.
65 homeless veterans are gonna be placed in homes. I would encourage any of the organizations here who can identify a homeless vet and let the city help facilitate that through San Bernardino County and get that process going. That's one person that we can help.
Deborah Stone?
Thank you. The homeless, the homeless issue is, is a problem, but it's not ultimately the problem of the city. It's our problem. Us as residents, us as nonprofit organizations. We all need to come together and try to figure out, how can we help? What can we do? We had a little forum over at the park the other day, and I really was amazed on what we learned. All they want is to become part of society, part of our community, and we need to work hard at trying to help them do that. Thank you.
Okay, we're on question number five. Oh, I'm sorry, Susan Burke. Apologize.
No problem.
Pardon me.
Well, first off, I'd like to, you know, commend Chief Mendenhall and his staff. I know they've given us guidance and direction on what legally can be done. You know, everybody has rights, the businesses, the residents, and the homeless as well. And we've worked within those bounds. I also know that the city has limited resources, and we have to look to the nonprofit organizations to really help out here. And as most of the people, you know, the candidates up here have alluded to, you know, it's a priority issue for the city, and where does this reside? So I think what we need to do is work with those organizations that have that expertise. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Now we're on question number five. We'll start with Mr. Dunn. Should the city of Upland keep our local police or save money by contracting with the San Bernardino County Sheriff Department to save money?
Oh, great question. I actually worked on this personally for the city of Upland, and the city should keep its own police force. To tell you that this is what's gonna happen, you try to get rid of the police force and go with the sheriffs, you're gonna end up paying more money for 10 years, dealing with the unfunded pension obligations at that particular time. Plus, the county is having the same kind of problems that Upland's having, and they're gonna charge as much, if not more, than we're currently being able to provide police services. It's been looked at, it's not feasible. I don't think we waste their time, nor our time, to go down that road again.
Thank you. Carol, Tim?
Could you repeat it again, please?
Should the city of Upland keep our local police or save money by contracting with the San Bernardino County Sheriff Department to save money?
Looking at the fiscal problems, either way, it looks like it's better to keep our own police department. And the reason being too, is we need to, I also think we need to increase our police services. I've gotten complaints from people that say we don't, they're not getting the services as quickly as they wish. And I've also talked about the San Bernardino County sheriffs, and the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department offers a very negative tone. A lot of people say they, they have dealt with them, and they have not been sufficient in getting them to come to even, when they have a problem, they get their car broken into, and they waited and waited, and finally they got a note from the sheriff's department saying, oh, go ahead, you know, go ahead and just submit this to the police department. We won't even come out to see you. So I believe the, it's kind of, I know they have a bad rap, the sheriff's department, and I, I've actually met some of them, they're nice. They actually have a homeless group that, that has trained one of our sheriffs to deal with the homeless, which I thought was a good thing. But other than that, no, I do not think we should outsource our own police department. We need to keep what we have.
Thank you. Gino Felipe?
I've shared my views here for three and a half, almost four years, and we don't need to go down the road again of asking the county to provide a quote, which as Mr. Dunn alluded to, will be in excess of the service, of the service expense we're already providing. In addition, I find great value, as our residents do, of having our own police and fire and paramedic services. Upland has a proud tradition of that, and I don't think it's something our residents wanna move towards. In addition, Carol, Carol alluded to some of the needs. There's reasons why our crime's going up. We have a new freeway, we have a million square feet new, in colonies with 1,200 new homes, and we have AB 109 that's delivering early release prisoners in San Bernardino County, including the foothill communities. And you could ask chief or some of the officers here what that means to a city like Upland. We need more police, we need our own police.
Mr. Schusler?
Well, this'll be easy, but it's not easy. I worked with the department that has, I'm guessing somewhere around 70 contract cities now. I will tell you that once you are bought into an outsourcing position through contracts, and it doesn't matter where we outsource in our city, once you buy into it, there's no coming back. That's the reality of it. So you need to think long and hard. Plus, converting our state pension to the county system, I agree with Mr. Dunn, it's very cost prohibitive. The other thing about increased crime and police services, we had an opportunity during the colonies' development to get an additional, I believe, I don't know what the numbers were, but there were at least one officer budgeted into this. It slipped through the cracks, we lost that golden opportunity. And I have problems with that. I am a firm believer that we need to look at the budget with the police department, and we have to get creative with it, because I, I do believe that we can upstaff our officers and offset overtime, and that's the way we need to go. It's just the way it works.
Thank you. Deborah Stone?
Thank you. As far as our police department goes, I believe the citizens have made it very clear, at least they have to me, that they want their own police department. They want their own officers in town, they wanna know who's who. And with that said, we researched, we did the research for outsourcing, it's not feasible. It's just not feasible for us to do anything like that. We're not gonna save any money. And it's not apples to apples. And that's one thing, when we're looking to outsource for anything, that we have to make sure that we're talking about apples and apples and not apples to oranges. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Burke?
I'm not a big proponent of outsourcing, and if we've already done a trade study that says it's not economically feasible, then I don't think that that's a road we wanna go down. I do believe when you outsource, you need to look at all aspects. You lose some cost control and quality control. And that's why if you do look at any outsourcing, you need to keep those in mind, and that needs to be a part of the trade study as well. Also, the residents of Upland has expressed their desire to keep our police and fire, and I would honor that, you know, request as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Rod McCullough?
Working at the same sheriff's department Mr. Schusler has, we, the sheriff's department does a good job, at least in LA County, but by no means would I ever outsource a city's municipality police department like Upland Police Department, because it takes power away from the city. Let's say something happens and you have a problem, you can call Chief Mendenhall, or you can call one of his captains, and the situation's gonna get handled. If you go at the sheriff's department, they'll throw in, I believe it's the same as LA County and San Bernardino, a rank-a-captain. And if you try to get usually a hold of that type of person, you're just one of many cities, you already signed on the dotted line, they're getting the money, and you're not gonna get that quality service. And one more thing, Ms. Tim brought up about the length of service, I too have called for certain things, and it's taken a long time for them to get out there, but what could they do? It's like being in Starbucks and one person's working, it's not the girl's fault, the line's going out the door. So if we give them more officers, the response times will increase.
All right. I'll answer it again, if you like. We're on question number six, and Carol Tim, we're gonna start with you.
Okay.
Here's the question. Upland business has not grown as fast in the Upland communities as in other cities. Could we offer incentives for a business to open here, or at least streamline the process in City Hall?
Absolutely. I'm really excited about this question. We need to streamline our businesses. When they come to City Hall, what I've heard over and over and over is that people say they're not business friendly. So we need to get a person, a case person, a caseworker that can come in, and that person will stay with that one person the entire time. And there's so many things we can do to help increase our businesses in Upland. First, as I said before, an economic development person is vital to bringing in businesses to our city. We could also encourage new businesses to go into blighted areas with enterprise zoning. What it is, is they get about 10% less, I mean 10% more, and then they're able to fix up the neighborhoods and make it better. I think there's a lot of things that we could do. We need to make our businesses the best that we can. And the only way we're gonna do this is through a business director who's gonna really help fill in those, those businesses that are out, and someone who will really look at the quality. What do we need in our downtown? What do we need? Thank you.
Thank you. Gino Felipe?
Thank you. The reality is, Upland's a bedroom community. We all wanna live here. Several people want new homes here, and that's the trend. However, Upland continues to recover from the loss of redevelopment agency, as most cities do. We've lost a lot of opportunity to lure in businesses. We also lost opportunity in downtown when the feds had a lot of money available in a transit district. That was prior to 2010. We have embraced a model that was brought to our attention from Randall Lewis at Lewis Homes, which is, you should approach the city's businesses red carpet, not red tape. So we put together a committee of 10 businesses, business people, developers, attorneys, citizens, architects, and they were, came up with a plan. And one of the biggest needs for our city to upgrade and help is IT, electronic equipment to be more modern, as with other cities. So Carol's right, there's a big need for it. Also, we got an award from the BIA on that effort.
Thank you. Bill Schusler?
I think if we go back and ask the city of Torrance what they thought about Toyota leaving them to go to Texas, I think we can all answer that question. We are not competitive against Rancho, we're not competitive around any of our neighboring cities. We don't have that ability. That said, we have to be creative about this, and that's what it comes down to, is creativity. And I'm a firm believer, if you offer incentives to new businesses coming in, you will pay, you will lose it in the front side, but it is a long-term investment. That is the reality of it. And again, we don't have a lot of land. We don't have it. We're continuing to develop residential properties. We have another one that's gonna be going up, over 300 homes. And, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't see anything in that master plan that includes retail or commercial space. Why?
Thank you. Deborah Stone?
Thank you. We are known as a bedroom community. We are not known as high commercial, never have been, probably never will be. The Blue Ribbon Committee that was put together did come up with a lot of good plans that could enhance our development services, help builders, help contractors. The problem with it, it's gonna take money. It's gonna take money to bring in the new computer system. They recommended we have a computer system where the contractors can come in and submit their plans all on their own. And then we just do what we have to, or they do what they have to do. But that takes money to do it. People wanna live here, they don't wanna shop here. Thank you.
Susan Burke?
As I've been on the campaign trail, I've heard from many people, and one of the comments to me many times over is, we're not really very business friendly within the city. So it's nice to see that we put a, as Gino tosses, a red carpet committee together to address that. And I think that's what we have to look for, because as Debbie also said, you know, we're a bedroom community, we aren't going to attract the same type of businesses to the city of Upland as some of the larger cities that have more land. But those industries that we can attract, we do need to act more business friendly to them. And I would encourage us to continue with this committee. Thank you.
Rod McCullough?
I've talked to a few different business owners, and they've, they said what everybody up here is sharing, that the process to come into City Hall is like jumping through all this red tape, jumping through hoops, getting the paper at window one, going to window two to get the pen, number three to file the paperwork. And that's a little, you know, overboard, but I'm trying to make a point that a lot of them, that's what it is. And the other side of it is, everybody's saying we're a bedroom community, and that's true. And, you know, one gentleman who had a business here and he moved to Montclair, he used that analogy of the field of dreams. If they build it, they will come, but everybody's been asking for 20 years, what's it? Nobody knows what it is. So if we could, you know, get together and find out what we could develop, what is gonna attract people to stay here? What's gonna make me and my wife not wanna go over to Claremont to feel like we're in 2014? That's what's gonna attract people to the city. There has to be a balance between what's there now and what we can do to incorporate it to today's society.
Thank you. Stephen Dunn?
Yes, sir. Okay, having talked with many developers, what they will build, and they'll come, is houses, because Upland is a bedroom community. There's too many options to shop elsewhere, and that's unfortunate. Yes, we need local stores, but anything big is not gonna happen in Upland. Do we need to provide incentives? The incentives kinda went out the door when redevelopment went, went away for the city of Upland. Again, priorities. Do we wanna create other incentives? Could we reduce fees for new businesses that meet certain criterias? Definitely. Streamline the process, without a doubt. If you come in right now to the counter and say you wanna start a small business, you're gonna be told four months. That's if you do it perfectly. If you don't do it perfectly, you're gonna be a year, year and a half, two years, and there's many stories like that. Do we need to streamline the process? Without a doubt.
Thank you. Okay, we're on question number seven. We're gonna start with you, Gino. This is a revenue question. The city of Upland needs an increased steady stream of tax revenues to pay for retirements and other expenses. So what is the best proposed financial or physical plan to create a wider city tax
Well, we've undertaken some steps towards that effort. However, until the state adjusts their massive pension system, we're kind of at the mercy in part. First and foremost, public pensions are a problem. As you know, there's no simple options that Upland can do to correct the problem. We don't have 40 to speculative 100 million to unplug from PERS. However, there are examples of us making gains, as I mentioned earlier here this evening, reorganizing new contracts, partnerships with other public and private agencies, and working with the employees as we have. There's also the initiative to consider going to the public for a vote on an increased sales tax. That would be an idea that the other cities have done, identifying them specifically for perhaps addressing roads, or library, or animal shelters, some, some of our needs.
Thank you. Bill Schusler?
The city paid several thousand dollars to poll approximately 400 residents about what they believe, how they would vote on a sales tax. It was based on a half percent and 1%. At the half percent level, I believe it was 58% said they would support it. We needed two-thirds on it, I believe two-thirds. That being said, they also came up with their, their statement that said, had we gone to the public and educated them more and told them where the money would go, it most likely would have passed, and that's what they're saying. Again, town hall meetings, I pushed this from the get-go, and it never happened. If you do not put it to salaries and benefits and it goes to public infrastructure, it goes to streets, sidewalks, and you have a sunset clause meaning you can vote it out in two or four years, or let it expire, that gives you the power to do that, then we have an audit once a year that's, that's available to you, for you to review to make sure that we are in compliance with that. How much more trust can you gain from that if that's what your promise? But it is up to you to vote that, and you can sunset clause that out if you choose that that's necessary.
Thank you. Deborah Stone?
Thank you. The, the public pension problems have been a problem. They always, and they're, it's not unique to Upland. These problems, everyone is facing the same issues. We have to, this has gotta go to the state level. This has got to go and, and be voted on where you, as the residents and the people of the state of California say, this is what we want to have done. I have to agree with Bill. I agree in that half a percent sales tax that we talked about. I mean, you're talking about five cents on a dollar, or whatever it was, and if that's gonna go and fix our streets and our trees and our sidewalks in the city of Upland, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Burke?
I don't think there's any easy answer to create the revenue, an additional revenue stream. The citizens were, or the residents were already polled. The citizens were, or the residents were already polled. This would require 2/3 majority, and it was not passed. We have to still look within the city to see if there's underutilized assets that we could either create some revenue from, or sell them off, or there are other opportunities within the departments we have within the city. But without the residents backing any type of tax increase, that won't happen. So I think we have to look internally.
Rod McCullough?
I hear a lot of people talking about pensions, and I'm not biased, because I was in a private LA County system, so I'm not sticking up for the pension people, but the fact of the matter is, the pension system was never designed to be placed on the backs of the cities. When PERS up in Sacramento became fiscally irresponsible, and several of their members over the last five years have went to jail for fraud, the funds went down. So what they did now is they threw it on the backs of the city to make them pay for it, who in turn throws it on the back of the employees to make them pay for it. So it's not really anybody in the city's fault, but yes, we do need to do something. And I wouldn't be against a tax if the money's being managed properly. But I have a brother who always wants help, and I give him money, and all of a sudden I go over and I see four packs of cigarettes, because he's not handling his money properly. So if he was, so I cut him off. But if he's handling his money properly, I'll pay his rent and won't ask for it back. So I don't have a problem with a minor sales tax once this fiscal house is in order here.
Stephen Dunn?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Dan, the city of Upland needs an increased steady stream of tax revenues to pay for retirement and other expenses. So what is your best proposed physical plan to create a wider city tax base?
Okay, well, the question has to be asked, how much money's needed? What's the priorities? We've talked about a lot of things. How do we pay for them? Most people got to understand, the revenues, we're talking about general fund revenues would provide most of the services that you guys see. Okay? So, not a lot of options there. Property tax, sales tax, or fees. You're not going to raise a lot of money with fees. Raise them 10%, you're talking 200 grand. Property tax and sales tax, what's the options there? Property tax does take a majority vote. Sales tax, depending on the type of sales tax, takes a simple 50% plus one. Plus, the sales tax is not fully burdened by all the residents in Upland. A lot of people do shop from outside the city, particularly in the colonies. We estimated 30% of the money would be paid for from outside. You've got to use recurring revenues, not one-time revenues. You don't sell off an asset and use that money for operations. So my guess, or my recommendation, sales tax.
Thank you. Carol Tim?
I think the reason the sales tax didn't pass is because of the way it was presented. It should have been, we should have had more education in it, but I would have said no to the sales tax, only because it said it goes to the general fund. And most people I talked to said, oh, it goes to pensions. We don't want to support that. But I think, like in Rancho Cucamonga, they said, let's, we're going to use it for a specific purpose. If we were to say, we're going to fix the infrastructure, we're going to fix your streets, we're going to fix your sidewalk, we're going to fix, we're going to trim your trees, then I bet people would have raised their hand and said, you know, that's a great thing to do. So I think the city needs to be proactive in how they're presenting a sales tax. If they are going to spend it for the general fund, I know I would be leery to vote for it. But if you say, we're going to spend it for my infrastructure that's falling apart completely on these streets, I would say, yes, I want to back that. Pensions, that's another whole ball of wax. You're looking at the state. The state is the one who determines that pension, the CalPERS. We can't really do anything about it, other than we can negotiate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're back to Bill?
We get Gino? Oh, no, we're start.
Yeah. We're starting back at the front again, and this is a bankruptcy question. If bankruptcy is declared, asset liquidation is one of the first steps in a bankruptcy. Knowing this, should any city of Upland assets or city-owned rights be sold off?
Okay, well, for starters, I do not believe, based on the, what the city owns as assets is going to qualify in bankruptcy court, number one. So that, at this point, I don't foresee that happening at all. Second, if it were to be hypothetically pushed forward to that, then we are looking at our biggest asset as our water resources. Okay? When anybody declares bankruptcy as an individual, a company, whatever, creditors stand in line. And that's exactly what's going to happen. Creditors will stand in line, and they will collect on those. Our biggest asset, again, we're quote, "a bedroom community," so we apparently don't have a lot of assets, other than our water, that is our biggest one. That's obviously the one that's going to stand in line for the judge to make that determination, how that's going to be disseminated out to our creditors.
Thank you. Deborah Stone?
Bankruptcy has been, I mean, I don't want to say it was talked about, but it, I mean, the rumors have been going on. Upland has too many assets. We would have to get rid of so many things before we could even hit the bankruptcy courts. And that's something that people don't seem to understand. Yes, our water is one of them. We still have land, and we still have property that we would have to dissolve of before that would ever happen.
Thank you. Susan Burke?
Well, obviously, if you enter bankruptcy, there's a whole host of, you know, issues and guidelines that come with that. I don't think it's something that the city of Upland should entertain. I think we should look at all options before we go down that path. And as Debbie and Bill mentioned, you know, we have a number of assets, and we would have to have a complete listing of those assets before we would want to go into bankruptcy. I'm not an expert on this area, but I doubt that a judge would allow us to enter into bankruptcy if we have assets that we should sell off. Obviously, our water asset is one of our most precious assets, and we should, you know, protect that as much as we can.
Rod, please.
Can you please repeat the question?
I sure can. If a bankruptcy is declared, asset liquidation is one of the first steps in a bankruptcy. Knowing this, should any city of Upland assets or city-owned rights be sold off?
Well, I don't want to pretend like I'm an expert in this area, because I'm not. But what I would do is, first, I would have to gather the appropriate information to make that decision. And if it's feasible that we should do it, then I would obviously start from, you know, what do we need the least? You know, there's a lot of people that say we should get rid of this, get rid of that. But hopefully, it doesn't come to that. But I can't give you, you know, a full educated answer until I do some more research on this subject.
Stephen Dunn?
Thank you. Okay, well, most people, when they think of bankruptcy, it's because your liabilities exceed your assets. That's not the case here in Upland. When we talked bankruptcy, we talked about the general fund running out of cash to be able to pay its bills. That's the bankruptcy that was talked about. Okay, Upland has too many assets, water, sewer system, that generates a lot of cash that can help the general fund. So getting to that point is going to be virtually impossible. However, that's the reality of working in this particular environment, is the general fund does not have enough resources to deliver the services that you are accustomed to, and therefore, something needs to be done. And that has been done, in the fact that operations have been reduced and looked at, and there's new revenues considered.
Thank you.
Could you repeat the question again?
I sure can. Hold on one second. If bankruptcy is declared, asset liquidation is one of the first steps in a bankruptcy. Knowing this, should any city of Upland assets or city-owned rights be sold off?
And I say absolutely not. We should never, ever consider bankruptcy. I mean, Upland is a community with very high socioeconomic people who live in it. And as Stephen said, and our general fund is where we were having problems. It wasn't our assets. We actually have a huge amount of assets that we could sell, and it's absolutely out of the question, because it's water, sewer, all the things that are important to even running our city. Without our assets, we'd have nothing left to offer services. So I consider bankruptcy totally out of the question.
Thank you. Gino Felipe?
When city manager Dunn came to the council and shared the view that, down the road, three or four years from now, a bankruptcy could definitely be in the mix if the city doesn't change its way of doing business. So as Bill mentioned, it was a hypothetical. With that said, however, to answer the question, the court would actually be the ones to predicate to Upland if Upland were to enter into that scenario, on what you're going to sell and what you're not going to sell. And as far as I know, you're seeing some of that in some of the cities that are facing that now. Again, as the former city manager mentioned, it was the general fund that was in trouble. The city does have plenty of assets.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're on question number nine, and we're going to start with Deborah Stone. This is a two-part.
Favors.
Medical marijuana. The marijuana industry has silently exploded in Upland for our lack of enforcement of the new code enforcement penalty law put into place last year. We closed just one shop, but two more have opened. There are marijuana home delivery services. Do you favor directing more resources to shut down this industry, or taking a wait-and-see approach?
Okay, so on the first part of it, what I will say is, our chief of police and our officers here in Upland have made every diligent attempt to shut down the marijuana businesses in the city, with all the utmost respect to them, and to do it the right way. And with that said, they've done a very good job on it. As of this afternoon, I believe I heard, and I could be wrong, chief, but I believe there's still two, I think there's still two open. So with that said, you know, I commend our police department that they've done a very good job. The second half of the question was...
Second half, do you favor directing more resources to shut down this industry, or taking a wait-and-see approach?
The citizens of Upland has made it very clear where they stand on medical marijuana, at least in my opinion.
Thank you. Sorry, it was a little short there.
That's okay.
Susan Burke?
So, can you repeat the first part of the question?
Yeah, I sure can.
It's too complicated.
Yes. The marijuana industry has silently exploded in Upland for a lack of enforcement of the new code enforced penalty laws put into place last year. We closed just one shop, but two more have opened. There are marijuana home delivery services. Do you favor directing more resources to shut down this industry, or taking a wait-and-see approach?
No, I'm not in favor of taking a wait-and-see approach. I believe if we do that, then we'll just see a further explosion, we'll take more resources to get this under control. Obviously, we have laws that we have to live by, and we need to make sure that we're doing everything legally, but I'm not in favor of, you know, just letting this go unchecked. I think this is a case of, you know, we passed a law, and it had sort of unintended consequences down the road, and we're seeing the results of those unintended consequences.
Thank you. Mr. McCullough?
I'm going to sound like a hypocrite. I'm not for it in my community, because it's not, it does bring crime, but more importantly, I would say, through research that I've done, and my experience in the years I was in law enforcement, that seven out of 10 people that have the marijuana card don't need it. Any one of you right now can go to Dr. Jones, wherever he's located, several of them, and tell him, you're traumatized by something that happened to you five years ago, and you can't sleep, and he's going to go ahead and write you a card. So when it's used the way it's supposed to be used, as directed by the state, I'm for it, but unfortunately, that's not the case. And as far as home deliveries, I'm for that. Let somebody else come from somewhere else and deliver it to the people here that say they need it and legally have the card, but I don't think we need this in Upland.
Thank you. Stephen Dunn?
Okay, well, this city spent hundreds of thousands of dollars fighting that battle over a few years, number of different medical marijuana dispensaries, but one particular. And where did it get us? Are they gone? No, they're not gone. It was a waste of money. If you want to tackle something, hire more police officers and attack the drunk drivers out there, because how many liquor stores are in this town? Okay? The pot problem is a wait-and-see, don't spend another dime on it.
Thank you. Carol Tim?
Could you repeat the two-part question?
Yes. The marijuana industry exploded in Upland for a lack of enforcement of the new code enforcement penalty laws put into place last year. We closed just one shop, but two more have opened. There are marijuana home delivery services. Do you favor directing more resources to shut down this industry, or taking a wait-and-see approach?
Okay, we made a zoning code and said, there's no marijuana that's supposed to be in particular zoning. And when they move in, it's like any other business. If they're not supposed to be there, then we need to get rid of them. I don't understand why it's that difficult. The actual, I have an office two doors down, there was a marijuana shop that opened, and they had armed guards, and I saw kids going in there, and wondered what kind of, it didn't seem like it was up to what the state was requiring. I believe, I come from a pharmacy family, if marijuana is legal, then it should be at pharmacies. I really believe it should be given by doctors at a pharmacy, and it would be much better. I think we need to stop the medical marijuana. We don't need to spend millions of dollars doing it. We simply say, I'm sorry, you're not a part of the zoning code, please get out. And we need to do what our zoning code says. Why are we not enforcing it? That's part of our zoning code. Thank you.
Thank you. Gino Felipe?
Well, I think the person that wrote the question's a bit misinformed. There was actually six to eight in the past couple of years, six to eight dispensaries. The chief just shared with us that there's one remaining. The chief has been working diligently with the city's law firm to make sure we're following the rules, we're following the codes, as the shop Carol mentioned downtown was immediately addressed and closed. The other issue that's less, that's more difficult to identify is the mobile. You don't know if they're calling people in Arizona, or so forth and so on, and the chief is aware of that.
Thank you. Mr. Schusler?
Well, the reality is, if it was sold and taxed, we wouldn't have a general fund issue. But that's not the reality here. Okay. So, but, but here's the thing. Our federal government doesn't know which way they're going on this, okay? So if our federal government is not enforcing states who are allowing it now, like Colorado, Washington, and withholding federal funds for them violating the law, they're not doing that. So, I agree, we're throwing good money away to bad situations, because the laws do not allow us to enforce things. So at our level, what we can control in our sphere of influence is, if a company comes in, violates the ordinance or the city zoning, and goes under the misguidance that they're opening up under something else, then we go through the eviction process, just like we do with anybody else. But yeah, until we get firm legal laws that allow us to go in there, we don't need the liability, we don't need the lawsuits, and we don't need to spend money we don't have.
Thank you. We've approached question number 10, and we're going to start with Susan Burke. This is a business development question. Upland business has not grown as fast in Upland communities as in other cities. Could we offer incentives for a business to open here, or at least...
We did this question.
Did we do this? Okay. Apologize. Okay. Sorry, Susan.
Okay.
Let's try this again. What is your vision for downtown Upland in five years and 20 years? What steps are you willing to initiate and champion to move towards your vision?
Well, I'd like to see downtown revitalized. I think there's other cities that have done so with their downtown. We can look to those, you know, Monrovia, Glendora, and maybe take a cue from them. I think we have to bring all of the different property owners together, though, and work with the developer to see if we can get everyone aligned with a common vision. The problem when you have a number of different owners is not everybody is aligned on how you want to move forward. And what the city can do is, you know, provide coordination... And what the city can do is, you know, provide coordination, but we can't strong-arm, you know, property owners into doing something that they don't believe in, but we want to do something that's economically feasible for the city.
Mr. McCullough.
My goal would be to make it attractive to where people want to come there. Now, I like, you know, it's a bit like everybody's saying, it's a bedroom community, and there's different things that my wife and I like to do, you know, to go to downtown Upland for. And I was joking earlier about Claremont, but the fact of the matter is, there's not that much to do here. And I really started thinking about what that businessman said, "If you build it, they will come." And if we could even start in sections, quadrants, and start building something that will attract people here, then more business will come. It'll create more revenue. It may not solve all the ills of the city's financial woes, but as Susan said, I'm sorry, Ms. Burke said, the biggest problem here is unlike Claremont, where one man owned the whole property seven years ago when he built everything, there's so many different owners in downtown Upland of the property. Where do you begin?
Thank you.
Please repeat the question. Please repeat the question.
Yes. What is your vision for downtown Upland in five years, 20 years? What steps are you willing to initiate and champion to move towards your vision?
Okay, five years, 20 years in the future is, we're not gonna be Claremont. We have to find a different niche, okay? The niche is gonna be a market that's not a college student, it's not gonna be what Claremont has. Then we need to get a couple of the business owners to hold fast and get those types of businesses in. You get a couple in there, and they anchor it, and they start thriving, then the other, the property owners are gonna go, "I can raise my rents. I can actually get a little bit more money for these properties," and start getting other businesses that will supplement those businesses, and that's what we have to do. The city needs to make it a priority and needs to be able to figure out how to provide incentives for that to happen.
Carol Timm.
Yes, I believe we can fix our downtown. This is what we need to start with. We need 80% retail. Right now, we have a lot of beauty salons, 39 beauty salons, and a lot of law offices. Claremont, San Dimas, a lot of cities I've studied, they do 80% retail, number one. Number two, if you build it, they will come. We need more housing. Below the railroad tracks, there's the Lyons Construction. They've been talking about, and I was in the planning commission in the spring, coming in, building hundreds of homes. That would bring in people. Also, there was a guy who came in for work-live, have a work-live in downtown Upland. That brings in people. If we have people, they're gonna say, "Where are our services?" Also, we need a certified local government, and that could bring grants to the downtown. A certified local government's for only historic areas and towns, and that could bring in grants to our downtown. We also need to work with the Chamber of Commerce, because our main street needs to change from a 501(c)(3) to a 503, 501(c)(6), to be able to get monies for the parking assessment. And we need to clean our streets, and the sidewalks is terrible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gino Felipe.
Several years ago, there was a development plan which was designed and approved at the cost of a million dollars, and it's an ideal document. Right now, you have the developers waiting on the sidelines to, number one, wait for the economy to be coming back a little stronger, and to try to find a method by which to overcome the loss of redevelopment agencies, which has hand-tied the cities. There are developments planned for the south side of the tracks near MetroLink. I see two areas of a nucleus for downtown, the MetroLink station, the Cooper Museum, and also the Coesta Senior Center, which is about to break ground on 70 more units. It's a simple problem in downtown. You have several factions. Some are absent owners, some are responsible owners. They've gotta get together. It's not like Victoria Gardens where you had two or three players, or the Colonies where you had two or three landowners working together.
Thank you.
Mr. Schusler. Okay, I have walked downtown during my campaign, and that's what I do here, that there are just several owners, and, or I'm sorry, just a few owners, and they don't want to play ball. Well, that's gotta change at some point in time. Who's in charge? The city or these people that are holding out on looking forward? Second, let's get back to what we can do with people that are on the sidelines waiting for the economy to improve. How about we waive a lot of fees upfront and reap the benefits and the backside? That's a start. That's what happens with everybody else in other cities. Second, the merchants are saying to me that they are tired of being second-class to the Colonies. That's all they hear now is Colonies, 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 okay? If that continues, this is what's gonna happen. You just lost somebody else to Claremont, a merchant that left. So, we have to start looking at retention, and we have to start being a little more forward-thinking about this, and quit talking about plans. Let's get things going.
Thank you. Ms. Stone.
Thank you. For the last 30-plus years, I have worked just on the other side of downtown Upland. I have seen our community go from a thriving downtown to what it is today, and it's very sad. But with that said, it takes money. It takes ambition from the owners of the buildings that want to see the downtown improved. I would love to see it, the downtown improve. You know, we need to figure out a way to get more resources so that we can maybe offset a little bit of the redevelopment. The plan that Gino Felipe spoke about was a specific plan. It's beautiful. It's absolutely beautiful. If you ever get a chance to look at it, I highly recommend that you go and research it. And it's a kind of a combination of living at the top and businesses on the bottom, so it could be a benefit for us. But I will say, along with Mr. Dunn, we will never be Claremont. We don't have the college town to thrive on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, tonight, right now, we have the closing question. Mr. McCullough, we're gonna start with you. Since you, the candidate, will need to work with at least two other people here, who would you want to be elected alongside you?
Oh.
And why? Sorry.
That's okay. Okay, let me, anybody that knows me knows I'm not a chameleon. I don't, I'm not political, so I'd rather not get somebody's vote for telling you how I feel than getting your vote to tell you what you want to hear. I want to work, I don't know everybody on a very personal basis, but let me tell you what I want. I want to work with two candidates that have no self-serving interest. I want to work with people that are humble, have integrity. I want to work with people that can accept constructive criticism and give me constructive criticism and not be worried about what I think. I want to work with people that have your best interest in mind, because the fact of the matter is, we sat up here all night and heard these wonderful ideas. And you know what? I think Mr. Dunn is a fabulous man personally, in his personal life. He's wonderful. And I'm sorry that I don't agree with the way he handled the city. I hear from people that Mr. Felipe's a wonderful man, too, and I'm sorry I disagree the way they handled the city. I want to work with somebody that's not afraid to do what is not popular.
Thank you.
Can I get that business development question again, please?
Mr. Dunn.
Without a doubt, I would work with anybody that I'm with when I get on city council. I have a strong working relationship with Gino and with Debbie. We've talked about the issues that we're dealing with tonight at length, and we have agreed that we will communicate and try to bring the city forward on any issue. That's been a problem in the past. Not to say that I can't do that with others on this up here right now, but for me, it's Debbie and Gino.
Thank you. Carol Timm.
I believe that I can work with anyone that I'm elected to be with, and I believe I'm also a great person. I've always been a great person, though. I've always been a person who works well with other people. As a teacher, I've always, you have to work in groups. You have to work with children. You have to work with adults. You have to work with parents. And also, in planning commission, I worked really well. We didn't always agree, but we always got along, and that's what we need. We don't need a three against two like we've seen the last four years. We need to see working together. Who do I want? I want someone who is going to have integrity, who is going to do the job, who cares, who's a servant to our community. We need servants. We don't need anyone who has special interests, who wants to do it because they want to get reelected, or because they want it to be said, "Oh, we're a councilperson." We need servants for our city. We need people who are gonna listen to our citizens, and we need to work together to make it happen. I love our city, and I'd like to work with any of these wonderful people. They all have great assets.
Thank you. Gino Felipe.
It's what's best for Upland. I honor the decision of the voters. This is my third election. It takes three people to make change. It takes three votes to do nothing, and it can take three votes to drive the city in the ground. My experience with working with Debbie for two, two and a half years has been productive because I was on the tail end of a really fractured council in the wake of corruption. Stephen Dunn came in right when I did. I think he's done an excellent job, and I think the city right now, I'm not trying to disparage any of the candidates up here or the gentleman that's not here, but I think the city needs someone that understands the issues. The path we're on is the right path, and so to answer your question, I would look forward to, be grateful to look forward to working on a council with Stephen Dunn and Debbie Stone.
Phil Schusler.
Okay, I'm not gonna run on a candidate platform for three like votes. I can't do that. I agree that you need to have diverse individuals up here. They all have to be team players. They've gotta reach across and say, "You know what? I am who I am. Let's talk about why you're agreeing to this and I'm not," and that's how you get things done. You don't do it by following on the strengths of one person or the weaknesses of another. That is not the way it works in our council. You've seen that already. And that being said, with the task force recommendations, for some of you that aren't aware of them or don't follow them, I have them printed out. They can be given out to you later on, but you need to take a look at all these recommendations. And like the city manager said, about 22 of those were his recommendations. Take a hard look at these, do your homework. That's all I'm gonna tell you. I'm not gonna say who I would like to work for, because I think anybody that's qualified that can work up here is welcome to work up here.
Ms. Stone.
Thank you. It's been a very interesting two and a half years since I've been on council, almost three years. And I have learned quite a bit about our city and how the dynamics work. This isn't about me. This is about you guys or us as citizens. I'm part of this community, too. I live here, I've raised my daughter here. Working with Stephen and Gino, I've learned a lot. Stephen has a lot of wonderful ideas, but what you want to look for is you want to look for the honesty and the integrity that you're going to get out of the candidates that you elect in this election. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Burke.
Well, I don't believe, and this is really a fair question, I don't think we should be asked of the candidates running, you know, who we align ourselves with. I do believe we need diversity of opinion. This is what makes our teams in industry stronger, because you bring more, you know, opinions together and look for a solution that's better than the individual. I do want to work with people that have integrity, people that are ethical, and people that ask detailed questions of every initiative. I don't want to work with people that just take any initiative that's put before them and don't ask questions. It's important that we, as council people, understand the initiatives and have a detailed understanding of what the long-term impact of any of those initiatives would be.
Thank you. Okay, folks, we're now gonna enter closing remarks. This time, we're gonna begin with Gino Felipe, and then we're gonna work our way this, to your right. Gino?
Thank you. On behalf...
One minute.
Thank you. I wanted to thank again the League of Women Voters and the Chamber of Commerce for putting a wonderful program together. As your elected representative, I'm honored to serve. I would be very grateful for another four years. I look forward to addressing and finishing the job at hand. I'm focused on making continued changes needed to secure Upland's financial stability and business growth. I fully understand the importance of maintaining our quality of life here. I was born and raised here, almost 45 years in the area. This election offers the opportunity for the voters to pick three candidates, and I'm asking for one of your votes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carol Timm.
Yes, the citizen of Upland, we need my strong proactive leadership and skills to take us forward. We need to balance our budget. I'm also known as entity who has actually accomplished many goals, who's, we've actually improved neighborhoods. We need to support new jobs in Upland by local hire programs and programs to encourage blue and white collar jobs and bring in more businesses. It's vital to increasing our tax base. We need to be business-friendly to the people that come to Upland. We really need to improve our city's roads, sidewalks, and trees desperately. And we also need to improve the downtown. The council needs to work together as a group to support each other, as we said. We need to come to a consensus and be able to compromise. I love our city. I have a passion to bring Upland back, to make it a thriving community for our children and our grandchildren. I want to serve our city, not to press a personal agenda, but to promote what is best for all the people of Upland. More than ever, it's time for Tim. I'm number seven on the ballot, and I hope you'll vote for me. Thank you.
Stephen Dunn.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the host for putting this event on, and thank all of you for attending. I just want you to remember that you do get to vote for three of the eight candidates in this upcoming election. I basically ask you to make an informed decision. Do not rely on what one or two people have told you or what you've heard here, because there was a lot of facts that were incorrect up here on the dais. I basically challenge you to do your homework, to formulate a couple of questions on issues that are important to you, and then ask each one of us those questions, and see from those answers who do you think is best to be up here. Thank you.
Mr. McCullough.
This is, we all know this is a critical time for Upland. And again, I respect anybody that serves in any capacity, whether it's state level, local level. We know what happened already. We know what these, they brought. And I really hate to throw Ms. Stone into it, because she's only been here a couple of years, but she's running with them. So, if you look at the record, contempt prior to investigation is a higher form of ignorance. I urge you, I'll guide you through looking for the record. Look at the article Mr. Dunn wrote in the 909 that he wrote, not was interviewed, when he threw Councilman Brant, Mayor Musser, Councilman Bozart under the bus and blamed them. Now go back and look at when Mr. Dunn and Mr. Philpe took office and the other people went to jail, there was $23 million in the fun here. If you also look at the voting, nine times out of 10, Brant, Councilman Brant, Mayor Musser voted with them. So, don't listen to this. This is what upsets me, and you'll get honesty if you vote for me.
Thank you. Ms. Burke.
Well, thank you for the opportunity of coming and, you know, telling everyone what my, you know, platform is, and I would encourage you to do more research to understand where every candidate stands on the issues that are pertinent to you and which you're passionate about. I think this is the perfect forum to do it. I have a strong leadership and management background. I didn't become a senior program manager at a large aerospace company because I was timid or shy. I will ask the detailed, tough questions, and I believe I have the background to put Upland back on the right track, and I'm hoping you'll support me.
Thank you. Ms. Stone.
Thank you. I would like to thank the Upland Chamber of Commerce and the League of Women Voters for making this event possible. I would also like to thank everyone that came out this evening or watched on TV to help to make an informed choice. Remember, you have three votes this election, not just one. To close, I love the city of Upland. We are a diverse community of caring families and business owners. As an independent candidate, I have the demonstration integrity to continue to do what is best for the entire city. I am well-prepared to make hard calls required to continue to move Upland forward. We will need to continue to make difficult decisions to restore our pride in Upland. I will continue to provide you with the honest leadership. Our community deserves to continue restoring Upland to the city of gracious living. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schusler.
I also want to thank members who have made this possible tonight and for the community to show up. You obviously are concerned by looking out here, but I also want to thank all of the candidates to my left that have displayed all of their information and what their, where their views are coming from as well, so thanks for being here. Come November 5th, I'm gonna be taking one of two paths. They're not opposite of each other, but they're parallel. One of them will be, I'll either be sitting up here, and I will have four years to prove what I'm telling you tonight. The other way, if it does not happen, I will still... The other way, if it does not happen, I will still take the path of staying vigilant with the city and holding the elected ones accountable. That's the way you have to do things, and I want you to know that, and everybody else needs to be the same way, because that could have averted a lot of things that have gone in the past years. So I want to thank you very much. I'm a, no candidate, I'm not a receiver of contributions nor endorsements. I am who I am, and that's the way I'm gonna run my agenda. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, has this been a great evening or what? I apologize. Look at how many questions we got. We couldn't get to all of them. So it shows me that all of you are committed to this city. So please, don't stop in November. Show up at the city council meetings week after week, month after month, and find out what your city can do for you. Now, ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the League of Women Voters and the Chamber of Commerce, now's the time I want to hear from you. Your candidates, Bill Schusler, Debbie Stone, Susan Burke, Ron McCullough, Stephen Dunn, Carol Tim, Gino Felipe, let's give them a hand, and good night.